Good evening and welcome. Today is Tuesday, April 21st, 2020. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the tablet for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to read that disclosure that I read at the last meeting last month. Just that it confirms that we have the authorization to conduct our meeting this way according to the Governor's orders. I have confirmed with the Board of Education Council that tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's March 12th, 2020 Executive Order 20202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow public boards to convene a meeting without permitting the public in-person access to meetings via video conferencing. In accordance with the executive order, the public has been provided with the ability to view tonight's Board of Education meeting. This meeting is being recorded, and the meeting will be transcribed at a later date. A roll call of the board members participating in this video conference has been taken, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I have also confirmed with the district clerk that this meeting has been duly noticed. A link and telephone number has been provided so the public can view the meeting, and I am advised that the link is active and working. Furthermore, a recording of this meeting will be made available on Public Access TV. The public was able to submit written statements and questions to the district clerk for the public participation portion of the meeting, and to the extent, the written comments and questions comply with Board Policy 1230. The comments and questions will be read aloud during the meeting by the interim superintendent when we reach that portion of the meeting. Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's start as we always do with comments from the board. Pete, do you want to start?
Sure, I'll start. I don't have too many comments today. Obviously, the highlight of this meeting is going to be appointing Ms. Goodman as the superintendent, which I'm excited about. But I will reserve my comments about that until we get to that portion of the meeting. But other than that, I'll just say that I hope everybody's doing well out there in the community. I know this virus has hit everybody. It's hit home to some people in our community, some of our board members, actually. It's hit home, too. And I know it's been difficult, and I feel for those who have been hit and for those on the board that have been affected by this. I commend them for trucking forward on their board work. We haven't missed a beat, and they were able to power through on that. So I certainly appreciate that. And yeah, just thinking about everybody in the community. I hope everybody's safe. And then just lastly, you know, continue to be overall happy and impressed with the distance learning efforts that have been underway. I know almost two weeks ago now, there was a new rollout. And you know, I have a high schooler and a middle schooler. And so far, overall, I've been fairly impressed with what I've seen, and I like the direction that we're going in. What I'm going to be looking for as a parent going forward and as a board member is just more consistency across the board in terms of how that's done. I think, you know, there is varying quality, if you will, in terms of, I don't want to say quality, in terms of the robustness of it. But I know it's a new thing, and I know that our administrators and Ms. Goodman is working on it. So I'm happy with the direction that we're going. Just like to see, you know, some more consistency, particularly coming out of the middle school. But I know we'll get there eventually. But overall, very happy and impressed overall. That's all I have for Michelle.
Thanks, Pete. Cynthia?
I'm kind of going to say some of the same things. I mean, obviously, I'm very excited about Amy as well and thought that during this difficult time, she's done an amazing job of leading us through this time. And I'm continued to be very impressed by the teachers and all the staff at Tuckahoe. Like Pete, I too have a middle school and a high schooler, and I'm really impressed about what I'm seeing. I really like the schedules now. I think it's been good for the kids to get back on track with a schedule. And I know that Amy and the administrators are also looking to just continually make that better, as are the teachers. And I look forward to seeing what that will be in the near future. And everybody stay safe and stay home if you can.
Thank you, Cynthia. Laura?
Hi, yes, good evening. Good to see everyone. Hope everyone at home as well and hanging in there. These are certainly tough times for everyone, and I know that this COVID-19 has affected many, and it has personally hit our boards. It's good to see everybody here doing well. I want to also thank Ms. Goodman for all her hard work. I think this distant learning has been a massive undertaking. She's been working around the clock to make sure the students and teachers have the learning tools and the support they need. It's not perfect, but it's getting better each week. And I like Cynthia and Pete have a middle school and high schooler. I think that the synchronous learning has given them a chance to take a breath a little bit. They can manage their day a little bit more. They sort of really work around those videos, and they look forward to them. And I think it has really reduced some of the stress and their ability to manage sort of all of this work coming in. So thank you for continuing to work on that, and I look forward to more of it happening over the next couple of weeks. So thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Teraz.
Okay, great, thanks. So I, you know, we'll echo, of course, everybody's sentiments, and the distance learning has definitely been a challenge for everybody. And I think in times like this, it's a show of our grit and character when we can rise up during these really difficult times. I also just want to say that it's a time for very high stress, and I think people are really starting to feel the psychological impact of what is happening, you know, to our community, in our homes, and having this kind of change of life become more of a reality instead of a two-week break. And in saying that, you know, while I am really, I could not be happier about the appointment tonight, and I want to thank everybody because we did have a lot of participation from the community. I just want to caution people when they are posting things about the search and make sure that the information being put forth, especially in a public format during a time of such high stress, is accurate and understand that when we started this search, it was in July before Ms. Goodman was even on staff with Tuckahoe. And this board worked very, very hard to do a complete search and do a thorough search and do a legitimate search. And by making any comment to the contrary, it dilutes, I think, Ms. Goodman's leadership. It also dilutes the integrity of this board, which now I definitely consider myself to be a part of, and I take that very seriously. And where I would never want to infringe on somebody's First Amendment rights, I would just ask people to really think about what you are saying before you put it in any kind of format, but certainly on a public forum where everybody can see it. And I also want to say that in doing this search, I personally can say that it was a very educational process for me, and I am 150% confident, regardless, even, you know, before this whole COVID disaster, I'll call it, happened, that we've really done a great thing for our school district, and I'm very excited for what's to come. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Teraz. I actually don't have any prepared comments either. I'm just going to wait to make my comments about the appointment when it comes up on the agenda. I did just want to say that every day I walk the neighborhood, and I walk past our school. And, you know, I take really such pride in it. It really looks so beautiful and just really miss seeing the kids there. You know, it actually almost hurts. And I did notice that Mr. Marash and the staff at Cottle put up on the board, "We are in this together, Tuckahoe Strong." And I really think that says it all. And I really want the community to continue to know how much that this board is supporting our administration. We are behind our leader 100%, whatever is needed to get us through this difficult and challenging time. We know firsthand that our community has been hit very hard with this virus. And while, you know, some of us are just struggling in terms of being home and having to homeschool and help out our kids with their learning, there's also a lot of other loss. So I want to extend my sympathy and condolences to those who have lost loved ones. Also, there's a financial loss, and there's a loss of freedoms. This is a very serious matter. So I really think it is the time when we pull together as a community, and that is when we are our best. And to have a leader to get behind in this time, I think, really says it all for us and how fortunate we are. And this is a time to really count our fortune and things that we are lucky to have. So I think we have to try to stay positive as much as we can and support the needs of our staff and our students as the best of our ability in whatever way we can. And we will continue to do so. And I think it's important that the community knows that this board is working very hard to stand behind our superintendent as she leads our community through this. I will hold my other comments for later, and I did now want to turn it over to Ms. Goodman.
Good evening, Board Trustees, colleagues, parents, and community members. As previously communicated, our school closure is currently through May 15th. Our update is distance learning plan was put into action and is providing our students with more opportunities for synchronous learning. It is obvious that our children are thrilled to see our teachers as our teachers are happy to see them. I want to thank the teachers and the administrators for their support during this time. I also want to recognize that Teacher Appreciation Week is May 4th through May 8th. Teachers, as you know, change the life of students every day. As with this abrupt change to virtual and online classrooms, we recognize and appreciate the pivotal role that teachers play now more than ever. Our teachers have developed and provided the distance learning and collaborated with the administrators. It's been a team effort, and I appreciate the teachers and administrators for the countless hours they spent on that. And we will continue to be reflective and improve on what we have put in place. Please thank your teachers for their efforts. We appreciate your feedback and your support. Also, the principals have a system to track student engagement online on a daily basis. Knowing which students are engaging, how much they're engaging, is essential. When students return also, we understand that we are going to have to change our instruction. I know there have been some questions about that. We know that we will have to do more review next year or when we come back, and that we will have to provide some compensatory services, perhaps, for some students. We will be instituting more interactive activities as we move forward, and we will increase not only our flexible Fridays, but other activities during the week, such as literature circles and a Tuckahoe Passion Project, which would be "Tuckahoe Together, We're in This Together." While the spring sports season is on hold, students are meeting with their extracurricular club virtually. If you have a student that is in the middle school or high school and is not in a club or hasn't been able to connect, please contact your guidance counselor or school administrator. We want students to connect both academically and socially. Special congratulations to Senior Jack Gentry, who is on the boys varsity basketball team and was just named All-State Honorable Mention. Construction has been continuing while we are closed. Classrooms and hallway areas of the second-floor Cottle addition are substantially complete. Landscaping is underway, and the significant piece of construction that remains is the elevator. I have been trying to put up pictures of Cottle and different pictures on Facebook so you can see how we're moving along. Construction on the Cottle Lower Security vestibule also continues, and they are installing the exterior ceiling on a ramp. Tonight, Russ Davidson from KGND will be presenting later this evening and give more of an extensive update. Another question that comes up frequently, and we had a questionnaire for Cottle. We've heard this there, too, are the grading for the fourth period. I just want you to understand that our commitment is to our families and to our students, and we will ensure that the grading policy is fair considering this crisis. We are looking very strongly at a pass fail or pass incomplete option. We will be deciding on that very soon. We do not want to hurt students, but we also want to help students because some students may want to improve their grade, and we want to give them the option within this grading. Also, the fourth period will be weighed differently. We, you know, there are no regions. We are making decisions very quickly on final exams. I don't want to tell you where we're moving. I'm going to let the building tell you, but I just want you to understand that there's been committees and teams, and we take this very seriously. Another area that we take very seriously is graduation and moving up. The senior class of 2020, although we know how heartbreaking and experience this is for some of you, probably all of you, as you were planning so many activities around graduation, we are ensuring, we have teams working on this, too, that we will have both virtual and real face-to-face eventually celebrations for you, even if we come back on the Friday of Thanksgiving or something like that where we have a celebration. We appreciate how you've handled all of this, and we are coming up with ideas for you. And I thank everybody who's working on this, and the same for students who are moving up. Again, next year, we are aware that students will need more time for learning and to get back in school. We are recalibrating the curriculum so that review time for students is longer, and we are looking at creative ways to provide some compensatory education for those who need it. As you'll see in my presentation later tonight on the budget, we are still trying to maintain small class size, which will make a very big difference as we return from this pandemic. Some of you may be wondering when we are coming back and what our plans are for reentry. I don't know when we're coming back. I certainly hope and pray that it's soon because we miss our students very much, and we know that you would like them back in school. But however we turn, whenever we return, we will do this under the guidance of our health organizations, our school physician, and our school nurses. You know, it may be a comeback with some social distancing, and maybe there's a calibrated comeback. I really don't know, but it will be done safely, and all the superintendents will ensure that. We are already talking about that. Finally, we are working on a time capsule so that students can remember this historic, unprecedented time in our history and look back at our heroes, our own perseverance, how we stepped up and came together through this. "Tuckahoe Together Strong." I want to wish you all the best of health and peace, and I also want you to know that we are here for you. You can reach out to me, a guidance counselor, a principal, your teacher. We care, and we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Lee, did you have any comments?
I would just like to say briefly that behind the scenes, our custodians are maintaining our buildings. We're continuing our construction projects. And I also would like to offer a word of thanks to our business office staff who are working remotely to make sure all the behind-the-scenes things that need to be done to keep the school district running are taking place. And we all appreciate everything that they're doing, and there'll be more on the budget as we go further into the meeting.
Okay, comments from the PTA?
Okay, I have comments from Tara Zager, from the PTA president. The PTA has been busy reimagining some of the activities to adjust to social distancing. We are pleased to report that our after-school STEM programs through Curious on the Hudson have gone on to an online model. Families should have heard directly from Curious on the Hudson to opt into the program. New registrations will be accepted. Thank you to our partners on Curious on the Hudson for making this possible. The PTA Dance Program will also be going online. Schedules for classes to be held virtually will be emailed. Thank you to Lauren, our dance teacher, for making this shift and continuing to provide our students a chance to still be together and dance. Right now, families may view Screen Ages: The Next Chapter through a virtual link available until 4/27. While all families may view the program, this is most appropriate for middle-school-age students and above. Thank you to the program producers for offering this option. We also thank Barnum Financial for holding a webinar called Parenting and Money, which was offered to our families this past week. Families should also look to online book fair through Scholastic, which will be offered district-wide beginning in May. Further details will be announced as they become available. Applications for PTA scholarships are still being accepted. PTA has extended the deadline for applications through May 15. Applications will be obtained on School D, Naviance, or for Ms. Nicolados in the guidance office. Submissions can also be sent directly to Ms. Nicolados. PTA offers up to six scholarships for $1,000 each. Sadly, we had to postpone our spring social until next fall and intend to put on a wonderful event October 16th, 2020. We thank each and every business and community member who made donations to this fundraiser before the school closures. There are many. We appreciate you and thank you. The PTA asks our community to try to support these businesses now when they need you the most, of course, doing so safely and responsibly. We also thank the Bronxville Field Club for being so understanding and working with us to make the change. Unfortunately, our Yankee fame fundraising remains in a wait-and-see posture until we know what decisions will be made about Major League Baseball. PTA also extended the Little Caesar fundraiser into June and will provide more details about that as circumstances change. If families have any questions about other events, the PTA is constantly making plans and decisions. Information is always available through the PTA website, The week of April 27th, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. Never have families of the district owed as great a debt of gratitude to our dedicated educators and administrators as we do right now. Families should watch PTA announcements for details of how students can share their message of thanks virtually. In the meantime, we will continue to offer our thanks to every district employee for all they are doing each and every day to support our students in this unprecedented time. We send our continued best wishes to the entire community for continued help.
Thank you, Amy. Are there comments from the Tuckahoe School Foundation?
No.
No comments? Okay. Okay, we'll move on to superintendent search update. Pete and Laura, did you want to just talk about that now? Or did you want to wait until we get?
Yeah, we'll after, I figured we'll wait till after that.
Okay. Okay, now we're up to the budget presentation.
I think I shared the screen. Is that shared?
Yes.
Okay, great. Beyond attending to the health and safety of our students, staff, and their families, we are extremely concerned about the future impact of the fiscal catastrophe this crisis has created and for the overall district budget. Our goal in this third round of budget presentation is clear. Due to receiving lower state funding and a likelihood of further reduction as a result of the state having a current deficit of $15 billion, we must anticipate future cuts in aid. Although it is uncertain and evolving in terms of federal support, when would the economy will restart and how long the recovery may take? Currently, we are in a fiscal downturn, and the budget is reflective of that. So I want the community to be aware that this budget is very different than the budget that was presented on March 2nd, though it will include some of that, March 30th, where we made some cuts, and then tonight. It's important, though, that we understand who we are and our points of pride. And I've had this in every presentation. First and foremost, we want to maintain what we are known for in academics, the arts, and athletics. This budget maintains the district's educational program while also providing priorities to ensure we are meeting students' needs. Our focus is on maintaining our teachers in the classroom. Support of faculty and staff that deal directly with our students is needed now more than ever. Our goal is preparing every student for excellence. It is our vision and the focus of this budget. We also always look at our strategic plan, which talks about diverse needs for students, professional learning, social and emotional learning, and contemporary teaching and learning. I'm sorry, went the wrong way. Additionally, our mission... Hold on, I got to move you guys away because you're blocking my view. Okay. Our mission is preparing every student for excellence, enhancing academic performance for success in college, career, and citizenship, building strong relations between the district and the community, and ensuring fiscal responsibility and sustainability. I don't know why it's not moving. There we go, sorry. This budget maintains the district's educational programs, and it also is based on our strategic plan, ensures fiscal responsibility, and is responsive to the COVID-19 crisis. Adopting a fiscally responsible budget in light of what's going on in the state budget is very important to us. The Federal Cares Act has given our district frozen state aid. All districts in the state aid was frozen to the 2019, 2020 level, and we have also reduced that another 4% hearing the governor's speeches the last few times. Also, the financial plan assumes that the Director of Budget is allowed to revisit the budget three times this year to adjust spending as needed, depending on the state's financial health. The period ends April 30th, the 2nd on June 30th, and the 3rd this December 31st. This budget is a reaction to the fact that our overall state budget will be balanced with the minimum federal infusion to aid to deal with the pandemic of $10, again, $10 to $15 billion to support the state. Absent that amount, the state budget director will most certainly have to make mid-fiscal year cuts to aid, likely beginning May 1st or April 30th. Cuts to state aid, especially once budgets are finalized, would be educationally devastating for students and staff. Finally, the economic environment of our community members and families are affected, and we need to keep that in mind. National state economic news has been horrific in drop in sales and unemployment claims. These trends drive down state revenues and increase costs and affects our families and our community members. The budget is sensitive to the economic environment of our times. In our first round, we cut because Lee and I have thought that our aid would not stay constant and that we would not get the addition that we thought we were getting as of January. So in March 30th, when we met, we cut out some programs that we would have liked to put in and brought our budget to a budget neutral for what we thought the state aid would be. And it was a good hypothesis because that's exactly what happened a few days later. But we need to do more, as I said, because we've heard such very grim news from the governor, and we know that New York State is doing everything they can for the health crisis, but it is putting us in debt. So when we look at budgets, it's important to look at the enrollment projections, fluctuations from grade to grade and school to school, and having the budget drive the needs of the district in terms of economics, especially times like these. Hold on. In Cottle, for example, if we look at the current enrollment, we see that we have 610 students in Cottle as of October. October is when we do the beds report, and we take a thermometer, a temperature of the school staffing. We have 610 kids this last October, one principal, one assistant principal, two secretaries. In our middle school, we have 268 students, and in the middle school, we have 268 students. And in the administration, we have one principal, as you can see at the bottom of the page, and one shared assistant principal between the middle school and the high school. In the high school, we have one principal, two and a half secretaries, and again, sharing the athletic director and the assistant principal. This next page shows it to you in a different way. So in Cottle, we have 610 students, again, a principal, an assistant principal, and two secretaries. Between the middle school and the high school, our current staffing is two principals, one assistant principal, one athletic director, and four secretaries. So as you can see, the middle school, high school is higher staffed in terms of administrative staff than the elementary school. I am not minimizing at all that middle schools and high schools are very different and that everybody has done a great job. By the times like this, we really need to look at the economics of the situation. What I am suggesting is this restructured secondary education. Between the middle school and the high school, there are 556 students. If we have one shared principal, one principal for both, one assistant principal, and I am suggesting that the athletic director, which is full-time for a very small amount of students, also is an assistant principal to pick up some extra help in the middle school, high school. And since we have to hire the athletic director, I would like to change it to an assistant principal, where some of the duties is athletic director, and that we reduce to three secretaries. The reduction would look like this. It would be savings for a principal of $175,000. The assistant principal athletic director is neutral, but we're just reorganizing the way that job is given to our school and getting more bang for the buck. And we also have a secretary reduction, which saves us $75,000, and that's a total savings of $250,000. This budget also, by doing this and by changing the middle school, high school, adds some positive pieces. So again, these are preparing every student for excellence. And if we break that down, we can look at academic performance. Starting in sixth grade, we can prepare students for college. Our faculty will work with curriculum and instruction over the course of seven years, teaching all students to be lifelong learners. As one unified faculty school with a shared vision, resources, and leadership, we can assure that students have a powerful experience in middle school, leading them up to high school. We can also work on increasing the number of students, especially students of color and students of lower socioeconomic status, and really, all our students, to increase classes of rigor and be ready for more AP classes. We can even look possibly at an IB program in the middle school as we move forward. We will be able to also, with a combined staff, give more small group instruction, have a more interdisciplinary focus, and increase community services by having older peers mentor younger peers and having some group projects that are secondary that reach out to our community. Additionally, we could look at a lot more coherence. Since the middle school and high school are already housed in one building, a six-to-12 configuration under one principal would change the rationale based on academics. The configuration would provide greater national collaboration, would focus on moving all students towards a higher level of classes. This change alone will not improve student achievement, but I believe it's in the best interest if we work hard to substantiate that achievement by measuring it. The six-to-12 configuration will create an optimal learning environment by having teachers coordinate curriculum and expectations, both horizontally by grade, but also vertically by course and interdisciplinary. In this way, the school focuses on the courses students have to take and the learning they need to be proficient and have access to higher-level courses and college materials. The benefits are clear as we take shape. Middle school teachers sit on high school curriculum development and vice versa. The quality of the curriculum would improve as a result of the increased interaction among teachers at different grade levels, across grade and across disciplines. The teachers will know their students well and collaborate with their colleagues to challenge each student at his or her current level from grade six through grade 12. Again, when you look at fiscal responsibility for a school, it's important that you first look at administrative courses, costs. So we are, again, reducing from an assistant superintendent to a director of curriculum at $30,000 savings. The next point has been changed. We were reducing to a director of curriculum, but due to the fact that this is such a fiscal crisis for our district, to have Lee Lu come back for one more year to lend her expertise, her experience, and her knowledge of the district will make a really big difference. Lee has agreed to do that. She even took a $10,000 reduction in salaries. So instead of saving $30,000, we're saving $10,000, and we're getting an experienced administrator that really can help us through this very hard time. So we're very happy that Lee is staying with us. But it's still a savings for us, and we appreciate that gesture. Restructuring the high school and middle school, again, we save $175,000 on the middle school principal, $75,000 on a secretary. And that leaves us to, in just an administrative cost, which without affecting the classroom or the programs that we have, $290,000 savings. Here are some budget reductions since March 2nd that we are reducing from the original budget. So we are unfortunately taking out some programs that would have been nice to start next year, but we are not taking them all out. We still are adding some extracurriculars. Modified athletics, we are not taking it out. We just are not having two teams. The AIS math, we're not having because we were able to figure out to do it within the schedule. Again, the secretary JV cheer, we're taking out, but we're going to leave regular cheer, which you'll see high school varsity. We're not adding the new clubs. We reduced the furniture purchases somewhat. In this pandemic, you can't do everything. We eliminated the rethink program and the ambassador program. I'm writing a grant. I'm hoping to get that to some of our great community partners. We're reducing some external professional development to do it more internally with the new director of curriculum and using our teachers more as mentors and really having in-house professional development. And Lee is reducing the refund of real property tax. So that's a lot of reductions since March 2nd. We are having some staffing increases with a really, with an eye towards small class sizes in the high school, as we spoke about in other venues of this budget presentation. I think it's really important that we have small class sizes next year when students need the time of the review. For the middle school, we are adding the reading teacher because we know that that is needed. We have a real focus on Orton Gillingham and research-based reading coming up. And we do have some money there for compensatory services for those students that may need extra after this pandemic. We are adding modified girls lacrosse and varsity lacrosse because we have made a commitment recently to girls lacrosse. We want to grow that team. Hopefully, next year, when things get better, we'll add boys lacrosse. We are keeping varsity cheerleading because we are such a cheer community. We want to make sure that we have our students available for our games, too. We know students have outside interests and outside clubs, and that's fine, but we also need you at our games. And we do have some very talented students, so we hope to run that next year. We are also adding some curriculum. We have outdated supplies in the high school and books, and we need to have them up to the level of the next-gen standards. The same thing with the middle school, a modest increase to upgrade our materials. In the elementary school, there is significant curriculum increases. We are looking at decoding program for K-2. We are adding foundations. We heard that from the community. We heard that from the teachers. We see that our students need a phonetics program. I-ready will increase to not only do intervention, but also enrichment. We have heard that there are many elementary parents that want that enrichment. The innovation lab, we have a robotics order for the STEAM program. And the WEC reading program, we are leaving Reading Wonders for one more year. We have to pay for that, and hopefully, the next year, we'll be able to get a new reading program, keeping foundations all with whatever program we use. We have some very modest facilities and capital needs that we're keeping in the budget. We took out one of our field pieces of equipment that helps us maintain our field because the town of Eastchester has told us that we can borrow there. So that's a savings, and we like community partnerships. So we thank them for that. We do need additional security. We've been talking about that in our security committee, and we're hoping to get that. And an auto scrubber is just a much better way to clean the floor, especially with the pandemic. And the furniture replacement is modest. We reduced it, but we know we have some furniture that needs to be replaced. Our professional learning is staying in the budget. We reduced it in terms of spending to do more in-house, less outside at Bosse's, but really doing it amongst ourselves because we have such great teachers and leaders. We are also looking at some technology upgrades. We need a compliance officer for the data privacy. There's a company that does that. We need some new smart boards for $22,000, and we are upgrading some of the district devices. We are so happy that we were able to give devices to every single student who needed that right away. We were one of the districts that got them out the soonest. And there's still some districts that are trying to figure that out. And I'm very proud of our district, and it is one of the things that we are so adept in compared to everybody else. And we will need to fix some of those. We have, in the second round, reduced the tax levy. We will talk about the revenues that she's reduced to respond to the budget implications of Governor Cuomo. We've reduced expenses since 3/30, which is a later date, when I put out some other things that I didn't reduce yet. We reduced more, including administrative positions, for $333,000. But the budget is still very focused on having a quality K-12 program that is fiscally responsible and meets our priorities of keeping program and district instructional staff for optimal small class size despite a fiscally and physically constrained COVID-19 world. Some changes may be dramatic, but I assure you, this budget maintains programs, its needed programs, and maintains and even enhances class size. Effective management of school resources is especially needed now. But we are still meeting the needs of our students. We are focused on investments leading to educational programs, specifically in the core subjects and math and critical thinking, 21st century skills, reading instruction, professional learning, contemporary teaching, and of course, social and emotional development. As a fiscally responsible school district, these options are most efficient and effective way to maximize classroom resources and minimize direct non-instructional overhead. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
You could stop sharing the screen. I'm trying, but maybe... Okay, there we go. Okay, wait. Okay, got it.
Thank you, Amy. Lee, are you going to add to the presentation?
I can do that now, or if you want to go straight through, I can do mine next if you'd like.
Do the board want to comment now? Or do you want to have the entire presentation, and then we'll hold our comments till Lee finishes? Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Lee.
Okay, one moment. I'll share my screen with you as well. Sorry, one moment. Okay. So as Ms. Goodman said, we took a hard look at the budget based on what we're hearing from the various New York State sources and my colleagues around the county and around the state to see we're still in a land of uncertainty. There's been no definitive direction from the state as to what the total budget cuts might, or total state aid cuts might be for next year. That's a concern in terms of making decisions, as well as even when our actual budget vote will be and how it will be held, and when it will be held. So there are many things that we don't know yet, but we are attempting to be prudent and responsible in putting this budget together, knowing that there is an opportunity to make corrections before the final budget is adopted if there are changes to what we are understanding the world to be like now in terms of our finances. As I have shown in the past, the tax cap calculation has not changed. That has not, there's been no change from the state as to how we determine our maximum allowable tax cap. As I've said in previous presentations, we have several growth factors that the state provides us with based on brick-and-mortar growth in the district, as well as the consumer price index, which is locked into place early in the calendar year. And that we go through with our allowable growth factors. We take a look at all the information that the state provides us to make that calculation. We do the calculation with the numbers they give us, which is the growth factor, as well as our CPI, which is what people think of when they hear the 2% tax cap. In reality, this year, the tax CPI is 1.81%, as well as we have a growth factor of 1.04%. When we add those together, basically, as well as look at our adjustments that were allowed by the state for various changes in our debt service, as well as payments that we receive in lieu of taxes, which are called pilots. And we can see what our maximum allowable tax levy increase is based on the state's formulas, which would be 3.4%. So year-to-year increase in tax levy, which is what the district residents would pay, homeowners would pay, is allowed to increase as much as 3.4%. And we would need a simple majority of our voters to pass that tax levy increase. However, even at the first, and here's the formula calculation that we go through, and we report this to the state, and they make sure that we are within our allowable limit. So I don't know if this is blocked by the views, but if you look at the 2021 column, this is a look at our budget based on what we have talked about in the two rounds of cutting, as well as any other contractual obligations that we're taking a look at and rollovers that we do for all our programs. What we are coming up to now is a budget in 2021 of $36,398,200. And that's a budget-to-budget increase of $915,500. And that's been brought down to about 2.5% down from over 3.5% previously in previous iterations. And that's by taking out those various cuts that Amy went through previously in her presentation. Most of that is on the instruction side, as well as some general support. There are the same basic budget drivers, although somewhat reduced. We have school supplies, textbooks, salaries, health insurance, occupational education. Some of those are the main increases year over year that we're seeing in our budget. And we also have some expenditure decreases. Some employee benefit lines have been recalculated downward. Some debt service. Some debt services coming off in the interim before we're taking on a lot of new debt. So we have a kind of window there for a small decline. And some other increases that we outlined in the first go-round of the budget. We have some, we had originally proposed a 2.5% revenue increase, even though we were allowed up to 3.4 originally in the first two iterations. We were looking at a 2.5% increase. But based on the economic outlook and the economic concerns for our community, we have reduced the recommended increase to 1.98%. And that is now an increase of $563,000, down from about $713,000 previously. And we were allowed as much as somewhat over $900,000 if we were, if we ran the full formula. We are looking at some tuition revenue increases that we can project for next year. We still feel that those are, even being conservative, that that is something that we can increase slightly in our revenue side of the budget of about $163,000. But that is offset by some information that I feel is important to consider to reduce some of our previous revenue projections. So first, we're talking about $150,000 of reduced tax levies to lower the tax levy increase to 1.98%. If the board decides to, that is the appropriate level they would like to see going forward. That's reduced our tax levy by, from the previous budget by about $150,000 and from the original budget as well. They were the same in the last two. Also, in the May, March 2nd budget, I had, or from, since March 2nd, I had reduced the county sales tax revenues by $80,000, considering that we anticipated that there would be a decline in sales and therefore, sales taxes in the, in the county, and we lowered that number. We also have lowered state aid. We originally had a small, a small increase in our foundation aid. We lowered that to remain flat in the last budget presentation. And for this budget presentation, I'm recommending lowering that at another close to 4% or about $50,000. From everything I've been reading about foundation aid, and that is just formula aid that the state gives us to use as we see fit each year. And it's based on a very, very complicated formula that the state decides how much each district receives. From everything I've heard, there is a possibility that we could be reduced another, right now, the number is $84,000. And that's based on the amount that the state gave us right now as a pandemic adjustment is $84,000, which has been backfilled by the federal government right now. The state is talking about possibly reducing that another $84,000 if the state revenues don't hold up enough to provide us what they currently think they are able to give us. In addition, I've recommended lowering transportation aid right now, considering the unknown about transportation aid for next year. Transportation aid is an aid that we get from the state based on this year's expenses. And as we don't know yet what we're required to do for the remainder of the year with transportation expenses, we may have therefore, our transportation aid lowered next year. So I'm recommending we put into the budget a reduced transportation aid. And if, and we still have been asking the state and the people who speak to the state almost daily, whether there's been any decision on what to do about transportation, payments and aid. We've gotten no direction as of yet from the state. We're hoping to resolve that very soon. If transportation aid, we believe, will be reinstated, I will let the board know and we can determine what to do about that. But for now, since it's such an unknown and we don't know if we'll receive it next year, I think it's prudent to reduce it for now. And then I also took another look at our interest income projection and considering the very low rate of interest rates. And right now, it looks as though that may stay depressed. I recommended lowering that amount as well, as well as the fact that we will probably have less revenues coming in that we will be able to put in our bank accounts and receive interest income on. I make the recommendation to lower that as well. So if we look at our revenue budget and the 2021 column in the center is our projection for next, or a recommendation for next year. As you can see on the first line, our total real property taxes, now it's recommended to increase to $29,088,000 or an increase of 1.98%, significantly lower than the 3.4% that we were allowed to raise, as well as lower than our last two recommendations of 2.5%. We brought that down to 1.98%. Pretty much everything else stays the same except for the total state slash federal aid. I have lowered that $150,000 over the last presentation. So rather than to remain flat, it's down $150,000 or a decrease of about 5%. And here's how the two lines, the two sides of the budget measure up against each other. We have baseline expenditures down to $36,398,200, paid for by right now revenues of $34,293,590. So the budget gap is $2,104,610. And that is a budget gap that is $32,000 higher than the last presentation. Most of the decreases in revenues were made up for by decreases in expenditures between the two presentations, except for $32,000. So there are different ways we could approach that budget gap. We could hope for additional revenue or state aid to come or be redirected back from the state. At the moment, we don't expect to have any new state aid. However, the transportation aid is still an unknown, a large unknown. But offsetting that is a large unknown about our foundation aid going the other direction. So there's still many uncertainties about state aid at the moment. Hopefully, there's perhaps an opportunity if we hear soon whether that might be firmed up better. Another way to, to close the budget gap could be to reduce expenses further. But as you heard in Amy's presentation earlier, we're looking to maintain program and class size and also to roll over our contractual obligations. So we have reduced quite a bit our expenditures on that side of the budget, although that's still an open option. Another way to close that budget gap is to reconsider the tax levy, possibly raise it higher if we chose to, and that's a third option. The fourth, if none of those three options are acceptable, would be to appropriate fund balance. And the amount would be needed is $2,104,610. And one reason I might recommend to consider increasing the fund balance 32,000 from the last presentation would be because some of these state aids are in flux. If we do find that we are not decreased in our state aid, we obviously will not use that fund balance appropriation next year. I think that that would be an appropriate use for using our appropriated reserves to, to fill in for unusual budget years like this that are kind of a one-time concern. It would be best to start weaning the district from the use of fund balance year-to-year and just maintain our reserves constant. However, in this unusual environment, it may make sense to, to balance the budget with fund balance and then see what happens with stated as we go forward, but still allow us to budget for the types of programs that the district deems appropriate for next year. And any or all or any combination of those numbers one through four will balance our budget. And as you know, this New York State requires school districts to have balanced budgets. So if we did use $2,104,610 of our fund balance and we did have to use it all, that would be how it compares to what we've used in prior years. As you can see, we did start to decrease the use of fund balance. And then in the past three years, as some of our programs have grown, we have appropriated for each budget more monies. However, we have not always necessarily needed all those monies if the conservative estimates that were made did in fact, come to play and we were able to have some surplus at the end of the year. As we've tightened the budgets over the last three years, those surplus amounts do get smaller and smaller. And we always have to budget on both sides of the budget conservatively because we do not want to ever run into the problem, if we can avoid it, obviously, that we do not have enough revenues or we've overspent our expenditure side. We want to make sure that we're carefully balancing both sides of the budget and trying to predict as accurately as we can what those expenses and revenues will be, as well as allowing for some changes that might occur against, that are unknown, that may happen during the school year, such as an influx of new students or obviously, state aid reductions or any kind of other things that may hit us that we're not aware of. However, ultimately, we want to have a balanced budget to present to the taxpayers. And we want to avoid cuts that might be necessitated to balance the budget if we do use fund balance. These are our trends. The top line is the amount of, I'm cutting off some of my presentation here. But our surplus, as you can see, is the bottom line and that's been going down over the years. Our middle line is the appropriated reserves that have been increasing over the years. And the top line is our enrollment, which had trended upwards and is now starting to stabilize. Here's our history of our fund balance. And as you can see, that middle column is our change in fund balance or, or surpluses that had been run in the past. And as you can see, those numbers have been tightened and are coming down significantly. I still am projecting a use of $400,000 in fund balance, which is what a negative surplus would be. And that would start to bring down our fund balances, which just as a reminder, many of those fund balances that you see in the last column are actually monies that are saved each year and put into the, into reserves that are specifically earmarked for future expenses that we do anticipate. So for example, we do have many tax certioris in this district and the district has chosen over the last few years to pay for those tax certioris through savings as opposed to borrowing, which is good in many respects for the finances of the district. It saves interest costs as well as gives us a higher rating to our, our lenders and produces more stability on that side from the district. In addition, we have reserves for pensions, appropriations that we have to make over times. And if we see an unusually large year where we have to put in a much higher amount of pensions for, as an employer contribution, some of those reserves help smooth out those tax ups and downs and smoothes out the tax rate to the taxpayer. So most of that monies that you see in the last column are reserves for specific things in the future. A history of our tax levy and the budget over the last six years. The history of the tax levy on the left side of the page shows from 2015 through the current budget projection. We are, have gone up in the last couple of years, our tax levy increase. But if we do choose to, to use a 1.98% increase, our six-year average brings us to 1.67%, significantly below the, the use of a 2% tax cap. And as you can see, over the years, we were entitled to use more. And some years, we used much less than 2%. On the second side of the calcu, the page, excuse me, is our budget-to-budget increase. I don't know if it cuts off the actual change, but it does show that over the years, this year, we're projecting a 2.58% budget-to-budget increase. And a six-year average would be a 2.36% budget-to-budget change. And here you see that same calculation, but in a bar graph. And the line on the top shows our enrollment and how that's changed over the years. And as you can see, the bar graphs are the change in our budget and the change in our tax levy. And that kind of lags behind the increase in the enrollment. So as enrollment started to go up in the 2014 to 2016 time period, our budgets really didn't start catching up to that till a few years later. And as you can see, we're trying to bring that trend downward to come in line with our enrollments. What we still don't know for next year are whether or not we will have further reductions in state aid. One of the key dates that are coming up is April 30th. That's when the state can take another look at the state revenues and decide whether they intend to impose further cuts on school districts or any other parts of the state budget. So we will be looking very carefully at what happens nine days from now. We don't know if there will be further reductions in other revenues. Some of our revenue lines are just really dependent on what happens to the economy in the fall. If there are much more significant changes to the economy than what we originally have thought, that may impact our revenues going into next year. We also don't know what type of tax certiori petitions and judgments may come about and what even the real estate market may look like in the next year and how that may impact tax certioris. So we will have to wait and see who files. And these are usually large commercial tax certioris or, or requests to reduce their real estate taxes. And we will see if there are significant new, we get new ones every year, but we need to see if there will be significant new ones that are unusual for these, for this environment. And as well, we're always looking at the staffing levels and that are required to meet the mandates for all K-12 students, our English language learners, our special education students. We always have to and are required to by law and we would meet the mandates and their educational needs. And that might bring unusual costs or new costs that we may not have predicted. We do budget conservatively to anticipate possible new costs on those ends. But again, we have to wait and see what that may bring about. And then anything else that we may not anticipate. There are dates to remember, although again, there are still some dates that are up in the air. Today, Tuesday, the 21st of April, we are having our, again, a budget review. Normally, this would have been the date that we adopted a budget. But because the state has pushed off the budget vote, it's been the recommendation to not adopt a budget today, to at least wait another week and see what happens with the dates of the budget vote, as well as whether the state does change state tax, state aid recommendations. And I believe most districts around the county and the state are doing that as well, unless they've already adopted a budget. Thursday on April 30th is the first date that the state will review the impact of the pandemic on the state budget for next year. They'll take a look at it at that date and we'll see if we get any new direction from the state on that. So up in the air is the next budget adoption discussion. We do have a board meeting scheduled for May 11th and possibly that could be the date when we adopt a budget. However, if the board decides it has enough information and wishes to do that sooner, we certainly can look into doing that. And again, even our budget vote and trustee election is up in the air. Normally, it would have been May 21st. However, we've been told it will be sometime after June 1st. And that's all we know at this moment. We don't even know how the budget vote will be conducted. So we are waiting to get direction from the state on that as well. And that basically concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Okay, are there questions or comments from the board on either Amy's presentation or on Lee's presentation?
Yes, I have a few.
Okay, Pete?
Well, first I'll start with the last thing that we just talked about. In terms of us adopting the budget as a board, I would, I would, my thoughts are we should hold off as long as we possibly can. I don't see why we would, we would commit any sooner than we have to, given the, you know, situation that we're in and all the unknowns and all the things to still figure out. So as much time as we can take it, stretch it, till we make these final decisions, particularly with how we're going to cover the, the budget deficit, which most likely will be fund balance. But again, why make those decisions any sooner than we have to? Let's get all the information and make it when we actually have to make it. That's, that's one opinion, that's one comment I wanted to make. But going back to your presentation, Ms. Goodman, I, obviously, the biggest item on there, the most significant item is the, is the, is the combination of the middle school, high school principal role. And I, you kind of presented it in two ways. I just wanted to clarify. You presented it as a real way to save money in this, in this fiscal crisis. But you also presented it as, as a way to improve academics in terms of trying to have more coherence amongst the two buildings and more of a flow, which I, which I get. I guess my question to you is which one is the driver? In other words, is it, is it more of an academic decision that's coming from what you think is a better quality education that also happens to have some good budget? some good budget impact, given where we are, or is it the other way around? Is it more of a budget decision that you also think would be good academically? I'm hoping you're going to say it's the former, but, but go ahead. I think you muted, Ms. Goodman. You muted.
Oh, I said you shouldn't give the answer to the question when you asked the question.
I should know that as an investigator, right? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, exactly. What kind of, what kind of agent are you?
So, you know, to be honest, you know, the first thing that I looked at was the budget. I mean, that's a very true piece. You know, when you look at a budget, you look at how you can be the most fiscally responsible and have a sustainable budget for the community. I mean, you do look at that, and you look at where all the pieces are. But when you step back and you see that, you know, once I put up, and I, and again, the middle school and high school has very talented teachers and administrators, and has been doing a good job. But the whole point, the middle-level education has been, you know, something that's been going on for a long time, and I still see them as separate entities, but it's not the be-all, end-all. People are starting to look differently at, you know, what we do between fifth and eighth grade, sixth and eighth grade, and what we do in high school, and the connection, and both the connection K to five up too. And I don't want to minimize that. I mean, I do believe that the high, the elementary principal and assistant principal will play a bigger role in the transition of kids to middle school. I, I, that would be part of it. But I also think that we have some, in such a small district, that there are so many teachers, number one, that are singletons, or just a very small department, and so much more can happen when you work with a larger group of people to do interesting, different creative ways of looking at interdisciplinary teaching, looking at project-based learning, having coherence between buildings and levels of teaching, both horizontally and vertically, that I really do see it as a big plus, especially once we start looking at, one of the things I looked at is how we are ranked in different rankings, and one of the ways that we lose some ranking as a wonderful high school is the amount of students that take AP classes. I think it was, been brought up before at a meeting, and it's, and I think that if we prepare kids younger for rigor, and we work together, not even just for AP courses, but what do kids need when they graduate? And do we really, can, do they, do they need everything that we are covering? Do they need the breadth? Do they need the depth? How do we get them ready for 21st century learning? And I think that there's a huge educational benefit when you have such a small staff. And I think it's a benefit for students too, when we look at service clubs and how kids can, can help each other in terms of, and help other people in terms of clubs, in terms of peer mentoring, you know, different buddies programs, things for students with disabilities. I believe that we really can work across a school like this. And having one school where you're thinking about the same vision for college and career readiness, where you have staff development together, both up and down, people understand what is happening in sixth grade that brings us to ninth grade, that maybe brings us to an AP class, what the teachers need to know. I see such cohesiveness going on, and if, and in such a school and school district, I think that we can improve our program by doing this. So, I see it as both.
Okay, so, so given, so I understand what you're saying, that the budget constraints is what sort of led you down this road. Now that you've gone down the road, and you've, you've thought about it, and you've analyzed it the way you just did, if tomorrow all this fiscal stuff was fixed, would you still go forward with this plan, anyway?
I think that that's up to the board, but I do think that it is, I, I am confident in the plan as being something that we can use to bring in IB programs, and we could bring in rigor. And I think it's hard for the teachers to be such singletons as they have been. And though it's hard to lose a position, I think that it wasn't just picked as something that was the only solution to do something financially. Like, you would never pick the elementary principal. But when you're looking at a school that little, and I know it's been a middle school, high school before, and I know some districts have, do have that, especially we're one of the smallest districts in the state, in, at least in Westchester. I think that it is a, I think it's a positive way to deliver education and be fiscally responsible even without the pandemic.
Certainly, when you, when you put a thought on the, on the slide with the number of students per administrator, it's certain you could see how it makes sense in terms of the ratio. And I totally get what you're saying about the coherence and about, I just want, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's not just a, only a financial decision.
It's not, no, it's not. And that's what I tried to get across, that it's not a financial decision. I mean, financially, it makes complete sense, and it does keep teachers in the classroom where the rubber hits the road. But I believe that we could make it a great program while still keeping a lot of what's important about a middle school and a high school, but really have better coherence across the program.
Now, I don't want to get too far ahead, but coherence academically, programmatically, but in terms of socially, they're still going to be separate, separate building, right, in terms of how the kid, your academic...
I don't see the, exactly. Let me make that clear. They still will be separate buildings, separate floors. They, we still understand that middle schoolers are little high schoolers. We understand that there's a difference. We will still be very cognizant of the social and emotional learning that goes on in the, in the middle school.
Okay. All right, well, I'll give somebody else a chance to comment. I just wanted to finish up by saying, you know, I, I think it's very responsible to, to make these adjustments and to, and to be realistic about where we are, and it's smart to err on the side of conservatism, given all the unknowns. And I, and I do commend you and, and Lee for putting together a revised budget, or revised budget, that I think strikes a balance between trying to keep us fiscally sound, but also being compassionate to the community, and trying to find a way to keep us fiscally sound, but, but also be sympathetic to the fact that some people are hurting financially, and by reducing that levy amount. So, I, I want to commend you both for that. So, I'll, I'll shut up and pass up the time.
Thank you, Pete. Anyone else?
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I was, I was pretty impressed with both the presentations as well, both the fiscally and looking at the adjustments made in the schools. I mean, I, I'm very happy to see that no, programs for kids are not being cut, which to me is, means a lot. Let's keep those small class sizes and make sure, not only they're not being cut, but we're even possibly adding things for these students. So, although it was, you know, it's hard to actually lose people, I think this time, I guess, it was a good opportunity to look back and see how the money could be sort of, we could save money for the community and also not cut things for kids. So, I, I mean, I, I'm excited about to see what, you know, comes forward. And I, I'm glad to see that nothing was really cut for kids.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Laura, what's next?
Yeah, I, I have two things. One is for Amy, one is for Lee. Amy, the literacy programs that you're bringing to the elementary school, I just wanted to comment on that. I'm excited that that was not taken out, and that, that is going to stay there. As Cynthia mentioned, it's, it's important to keep going in the direction that, that our strategic plan has put out, and that is to continue to intervene, and the young, especially the younger kids with phonics-based programs is long overdue, so I'm excited that that is still there. I think it's critical that the K through 12 alignment continues to go forward. As you mentioned, that horizontal and vertical type. I think the alignment and consolidation, middle school, high school, goes along with that, with that philosophy, and I hope that it continues in a K through 12, because I think the transition five through six could, could also be, be focused on to be more, you know, to be a little, what's the word I'm looking for? Consistent, I guess. So, that, that was just my comment there, really no questions. So, thank you for that presentation. And Lee, I had a question about the fund balance. The, so the $2,104.610 that would be taken from the fund balance, is that if the state aid you're assuming is not? We don't get that. Is that, am I right?
No, some of that is due to, it increased slightly this time over the last presentation due to the further reductions to state aid that weren't completely made up by expenditure reductions. But most of that is just to close the budget gap, and that comes from our unappropriated fund balance that...
Okay. And what I did notice, when you brought up that slide, the history of the fund balance, interestingly, when you look at that, there was only one year that we actually used. So, in other words, every year that you had on that slide, we had put in a number that we were going to take from the fund balance, but it looks like only one year that we actually did, which is why our reserves have grown. Am I right?
Correct. But as I also had said, that over the last three years that, in my tenure in the district, we have been tightening the budget, and those numbers have started to come down. So, looking forward in a longer-term projection, we don't see that growing in the same way, in any sense of the word, especially considering the economic environment going forward the next two to three years.
Right. And I, and my, just my, my last comment is that I think, when you look at some of the other districts that are struggling financially, I think that, to your credit, we have been conservative, and we do have a healthy fund balance. So, thank you for that presentation. And I do think, like I said, it, we're in a, in a better place than a lot of districts, and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to turn this around. So, thank
Res, did you have anything?
Yeah, I just have a few comments. First of all, I want to say thank you to Lee for staying on and agreeing to the $10,000 cut, because that obviously is something we need, is stability in the financial department of the school district, since finances are definitely a very scary thing right now. I have to say, it's always disappointing to see anything cut from the budget, but I think that, Ms. Goodman, you did a great job in really maintaining our goals for having small class sizes. And I also, I think that it's a tough decision to make, you know, cuts in any way, and especially regarding personnel, because it's hard not to look at it personally. But I also think that when we're looking at our district long-term, that it will benefit us to have a, more of a kind of cohesive department throughout K through 12, and I think that the students will benefit from that. One thing that has always been something I've been concerned about as a parent, and even now as a board member, is when we hear about teachers feeling like they're in silos, and I'm hoping that this change in structure will eliminate that. So, I actually think that that could be a very positive thing. I just want to also echo Pete's comments about holding off on adopting the budget for as long as we possibly can, in a responsible way, only because this is such a unstable economy right now, and it's constantly changing. And then I have one question, which was, Ms. Goodman, if you could just speak a little bit more, you put up about having two assistant principals, just to give the community a kind of sense of what, and not, not to say that it's definitely what it's going to look like, but maybe talk out some of the ideas of how that would look. Would it be like an assistant principal for each building, and then one principal overseeing, or if you could elaborate a little bit more on that?
Okay, so we are going to flesh that out a little bit more, but I have a few different renditions of how I put that together. So, I can do a later presentation if this is the way we're going. But I do see that if we're going to really be thinking of sixth through 12th grade, even keeping the middle school separate, and then high school separate, it doesn't necessarily have to be two separate assistant principals. It can be divided up, especially because the AD, I do understand, will not be able to be there morning, noon, and night. So, that person will have to be able to pick up certain duties, like DASA or the 504s, or student support, and maybe the other principal would pick up more of the academics. I mean, it would be, it, it would depend upon how we want to split it up. But I did, I did make, actually, just playing with it, a list of who would be like more of the student support principal, and who would be more of the operational principal and academic principal. Assistant principal, that's the way to go. But I would really want to meet with the team to see that. But I really think that it's fiscally responsible to look at a district that has such, you know, the size of the middle school and high school, and have a full-time AD, that there was just a better way to use that, utilize that position. And it would give the support to the middle school and the high school.
I think you're right. And I also think that one big criticism of our district from the community that's been a constant theme through the years has been that we're too top-heavy. We keep adding administrators, we add higher-level people, and I think that this is something that's been a conversation for a long time, and I do think that ultimately will gain support of the, the community. So, I think we're on the right track.
Okay. I will, actually, I was having the same exact thought as Teres, and on that point about the administration, it has been a, a common theme that has been said throughout the years. This is not the first time that it has come up, and there has been a conversation from the community that the district is top-heavy in, in terms of our administration. And, you know, it's interesting, because, you know, over the years, being on the board and the presentations, and the need for the administrators, many of it was for the same things that we're still looking to do today. You know, accomplishments that we haven't been able to make, and yet you are presenting in your same, lack of a better word, argument in supporting for, for making this change. So, I really want to commend you for that, because I feel like it is the first time we've had someone look at our district in terms of the smallness and the uniqueness of who we are, and how do we use that to best serve our students? You know, taking the smallness as a positive, and finding a different way, a more creative way of actually achieving the same things that we have been trying to do all along, but really haven't gotten there yet. So, I am confident that under your leadership, we will get there. Any change is difficult, and I'm sure the community will have many questions. I'm happy you're here to be able to answer them, and I know that you will be very responsive to any concerns that come your way regarding, or any questions that may arise from that, from our community. I encourage the community to ask them anything that they are concerned about. I do think fiscally, it is very responsible of both Ms. Goodman and Lee to put out a budget levy increase lower than where we could be. I mean, I, I think we have to reiterate, we could go as high as 3.4. We were originally proposing a 2.5, and now we're at 1.98. And I think it's very responsible, because the fiscal stress on our families is real, and I think being sensitive to that is appropriate. So, you know, and instead of seeing the things that we can't do, I think to say, like Laura brought it up, that we are still aligning with our strategic plan, the reading program, and all the things that are needed to move us forward. And I think that's really important, that we are still in a position where we are going to move this district forward. And so I'm excited about that, and it, even under these difficult times. I mean, when we talk about the fund balance, and even in the past, when there had been some criticism as to why the fund balance is what it is, this is why it is the way it is, because this is the rainy day that you hope would never come, but we're in a position that we don't have to cut any of our teaching staff, we don't have to cut programming, and we still can do what's best for our students. So, really, all the fiscal decisions that have led us here, I think have been appropriate, and I think we're fiscally in, in a sound position. So, and yet, we still need to be conservative. And I think it's also, to reiterate what Lee said, is we, the, the state is not going to meet, I think, Lee, you said, until April 30th at the earliest, correct?
Right, that's the...
Okay, so we're not going to know if there are going to be additional cuts to our, to our state aid until... aid until after April 30th. So again, what Pete said is waiting, you know, to adopt is the responsible thing to do. So I'm in agreement with that. And, you know, I, I, I think it looks good. You know, I, I'm in support of, you know, not, not so much what's being presented, but in support of where it's going to get us. And I think that, Amy, you've laid out a very strong plan of how you plan to get us there. So that's what I look forward to. And trying to keep it positive that we will be moving the district forward while we make these changes at the same time. Okay. Anything else? No. Okay. So we're going to move on from our budget discussion to an update on the capital project. I believe Russ is here.
I'm here.
Oh, hi. There you are. I can't see you. Oh, there you are. There you are, Russ.
Hurry up.
Nice to see you.
Yes, broadcasting from my living room, like all of you.
Yes. Okay. Well, I've been kicked to the basement, but that's okay.
The camera wasn't on, so I could eat my dinner, so.
All right. So Russ, we asked Ms. Goodman to invite you tonight to give the community an update on the capital project. We had initially, last we had seen you, we were hoping to have a completion for the end of March, early April. So if you could just let us know where we're at?
Well, everything's going pretty well, except for the elevator. And we've been very frustrated with the contractor on that issue. And we've been digging into that. And the elevator is now scheduled to be, to be delivered June 30th and installed after that. It seems that the contractor has been blaming the lack of the elevator on the failure of Con Edison to bring permanent power, which is partially truthful. But we've since then uncovered some inaccuracies in what we were being told about when the elevator was ordered and when that order was actually finalized. So it's been very frustrating for everyone. But we now have the intention of the regional leader from the elevator company, Schindler, and the owner, the owner of the general contractor, and they're working to better that delivery But the rest of the addition looks great. Our, our project architect was there about a week ago, took about 70 pictures. As the superintendent mentioned earlier, things are finishing up, even on the security vestibule. Generally, our quality is good. There will be a punch list of a few things to fix up, but the big delay there is the elevator.
Okay. Russ, when you said that there's a discrepancy on when it was ordered, do you mean ordered by the general contractor or ordered by the elevator company? Like, who's responsible for that?
Well, what we're uncovering is that they both share some blame here. That both the general contractor and the elevator company had changes of personnel in the middle of this order. So they both confess to partial blame here. So it's a complicated situation and we're focusing on getting you the right elevator as fast as possible. But when we finally got the right people to the table, we were able to find out what really happened. And basically, we and a construction manager were given incorrect information for a few months now. So that was very disappointing.
Do you have the specific line item cost of the elevator?
About $86,000.
How much? I'm sorry?
About $86,000. And Lee and I checked this morning, you haven't paid a, a single dollar towards the elevator at this point.
That was going to be my next question. Okay. Okay.
It's unusual, frankly, because at this point, you, you, you should be paying for something because, and the reason you haven't is because the final revised contract for the elevator was signed on March 26th of this year.
When should it have been signed? Like, when was this supposed to be ordered?
Well, a purchase order was allegedly issued last August. We haven't seen that. We reviewed shop drawings as early as last April. So a year ago, we were starting, we did our job, which is reviewed shop drawings to make sure it conformed with the specifications. And normally, when you start to see shop drawings, an order has been placed.
How? Oh, sorry, Pete.
No, go ahead, Teres, you go.
I just, I'm, I guess I'm struggling with how this went on for this long and how did it go unnoticed? Because to me, this is a huge problem. We were supposed to have this project initially done in January, then end of March, and now it's, well, we'll be lucky, basically, if we have it for the opening of school, when all is said and done. And this has been a big problem with the general contractor in keeping to the schedule. And I guess I also would like to know, what is the repercussion of that? Of not doing your job the way you're supposed to be doing it and not following through and paying attention to these very important details?
Well, as I said before, basically, we were, we were given incorrect information in that you can't install the elevator until he has permanent power. And that, that is partially correct. But it doesn't mean you can't order the elevator and put it into fabrication.
Right.
And that's the part.
Still going to need the elevator.
That's the part that they didn't tell us and they misrepresented, frankly.
So in other words, they're telling you that they didn't, they didn't order the elevator to be constructed until the power was in place, which makes no sense. But that's what they're telling you now.
That's what we have since learned, yes.
How long has these?
And what were they telling you? Sorry, Pete.
No, no, go ahead, Teres, go.
No, what were, what were they telling you beforehand? Like, who is asking those questions?
They couldn't do the onsite installation until they had permanent power.
Was it that we weren't asking, is the box ordered? Is the actual elevator ordered?
We, we asked all the right questions. We got.
Okay.
Disingenuous responses.
So what is the repercussion for disingenuous responses? Is it a financial repercussion? Is it, what is the repercussion?
Well, you can sue him for damages for late completion.
Okay.
All right. So we'll take it up, you know, with.
So I guess we should discuss it with our lawyers.
Yes, exactly.
Well, I think frankly, that it would be best to do that offline. There's a lot of issues related to delays and it's complicated. And we don't want to see you compromise your negotiating position in any way.
Just before we move on from this, Russ, just so I understand timeline now, where we are, that we are where we are. So June 30th delivery is, is the projected delivery date. How much time does the installation typically take?
About five weeks.
Five weeks.
All right. So yeah, so that's, as Teres, to Teres's point, it's putting us, us right up against the opening of school. So any, any sort of snafu, any sort of delay on that, we're looking at, you know, into September, easily.
Is there any way you can, like, expedite this before June 30th? By dealing directly with the manufacturing company?
Well, that's actually what we did on Friday, is we stopped listening to the general contractor and we called the elevator manufacturer directly. And that's when we finally got the, all the correct information. And so now we have the attention of the regional manager of Schindler Elevator, who handles the whole Northeast, and he's personally looking into this order. And I, after speaking with Lee this afternoon, I received emails from him. And he's looking at his supply chain, which is a little bit disrupted now because of the pandemic. And he's doing his best to try and move things up.
When can, when do you think we can expect an update on that?
I, I'll try and give Lee an update every week, as I hear from.
Perfect.
Hey, Russ, last question on timeline for me. So June 30th delivery, five weeks for installation, that puts us into roughly mid-August. Then, then we have to get the CO inspection, right? We need an inspection from the building department to get the CO, correct? How long does that usually take?
Well, Peter, in this case, we're the building department. So we actually do your CO inspection and we sign off on it.
Okay.
And we file it with the state. And on the, the date of our inspection, when we, when we sign the certificate, is when your CO is valid from. So that part's easy.
That part's easy. Okay. That's good to hear, at least. Okay. All right.
Do you have, Russ, an update on the change orders and where we stand with our budget on the project?
You're pretty tight with the, you know, the oil tank puts you in a jeopardy, but it's, I'm working with CalGee right now to get that all finalized. And we'll get, get Lee an update within a few days. But, you know, with the money for the field held aside, you're going to spend your full budget.
Spend the full budget, less the money for the field.
Correct.
Can we just also go over the field and what that will look like at the end?
I think what you're seeing out there now is the grass area that was used as a staging area has been restored. That's, that is the limit of the contractor's responsibility. The temporary parking lot was built by the district, so turning that portion back into the field will be the district's responsibility. And you need to decide whether you want to do that at this point, or whether you're going to keep it that way until you do something more with the field, or if you're going to go forward with that or not.
I saw that the staging area was, was seated, it looks like it is. There is temporary fencing there. Is that going to be removed by the contractor?
Yep. Yep. Definitely.
Right.
Okay. All righty. Anyone else have questions for Russ? No? Okay. All right, Russ, thanks for the update and you'll keep us updated regarding the elevator.
Yeah, we're, we're as frustrated as you are. It's never fun to be lied to, month after month.
Okay. All right. We'll, we'll look forward to the update and hopefully it'll be better news going forward regarding.
And we'll discuss our options internally as well.
We will. Okay.
Yeah, 100%.
Thanks, Russ.
I know.
Bye-bye. Okay. Now we're going to move forward to the reading of the submitted questions. Amy, you have the questions?
Ms. Goodman, you are muted again.
Okay. Okay. So Tara Galati asked, will the fourth marking period for TMS and THS be graded on a pass/fail method? And I did answer that in my remarks, that we are looking at that very seriously and that we will, all students and parents will be hearing about that soon. But I'd say it's very likely. It could be a pass/fail, it could be a pass incomplete, we're looking at different options, and it could be somewhat of a high pass, like if you do extra work, it's going to help you get a different type of pass grade. So it won't hurt anybody. In general, too, let's see, that was her question. Susan Mealy asked, how will shutdown affect hiring staffing changes, i.e. new director positions, retiring teachers, et cetera? So the shutdown is affecting the hiring. I would like to actually do an update on the hiring. We are hiring the director of curriculum and we have four interviews this week that will be online and virtually, and we have a team interviewing that person. For the board and the community to know is that we did do the interviews for director of special education and the finalists were not able to come to the district due to multiple factors. So that we will hopefully be able to have Ms. Bauer here for another year as a consultant if the board would agree to that. That could be on a later budget. It is through BOCs, it's not really an interim, and it is, it costs savings also because it's three days a week. And I feel like I could help her out in that position again this year, having that background. The other hiring positions, we are hiring the teachers where the openings are. And she also asks, have there been layoffs for bus drivers, cafeteria workers, teacher aides, custodian? And if so, are there any efforts underway to support these individuals? Well, we have been keeping on our, the workers that work for us and we are, for the most part, adding them more to our distance learning schedule. We're following what we believe is the state's guidance on this. We could, things can change and they could say something different. As far as the bus company, there's been confusion, confusion. Again, bus drivers are not our workers. And we certainly don't want to hurt anybody, but we're looking at the legalities of paying them when they are not taking our kids, when they're not transporting our students. So right now, we are paying people who are working for us for pretty much the most part. I think that answers her question. And then Danielle Nielis asked, what are the terms of this four-year contract? Will Ms. Goodman be receiving lifelong health benefits and an additional pension from New York State? Also, the side letter mentioned, there is no link to the letter. What is being agreed to in the side letter that isn't made public? And what is the reason for secrecy? So I can answer that, or Michelle, you can answer that question.
Okay. Can, you want to, let's, why don't we answer that question when we get to the appointment? Because then we can have a discussion and there might be other comments that other board members want to make about that. So we'll, we'll hold that off. Not that we don't want to answer the question, but we'll, we'll add it, we'll, we'll discuss it during the discussion on the resolution. Is that okay with everyone? Yes?
Yeah. That's the questions.
Okay. That's it? Okay. All righty. Okay, so let's move on with the agenda. Number one, approve the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda items two through nine. Cynthia, second, Pete, discussion. Fall in favor?
Hi.
Thank you. Okay. Now move on to business of the board. Number one, adopt Southern Westchester BOC's budget. Resolve to approve 2020-21 estimated administrative budget for the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services in the amount of $12,41,981. Chaco's share is $145,541. Is there a motion? Pete, second, Laura, discussion. Discussion, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Number two.
Michelle, I wonder if, has, is the visual, can everybody see us? I don't know if that was, that was addressed. I don't know if we should.
We changed it.
Oh, so we, the community can see us all when we, when we vote? Okay.
We believe that, like, the way you can see it up on top, everybody, we're thinking that everybody else can.
Okay.
I actually only see myself and Pete.
Really? Well, that's, that's because of the way you have it. You can click the gallery view.
Okay, that's, whatever.
If everybody else.
Film the gallery view.
Yeah, just click on gallery view. You should, then you'll see us all.
I don't have that choice, but that's fine. Not about, that's fine.
Okay. Number two, approve Southern Westchester BOC's trustees. Resolve that one vote be cast for Cheryl Brady and Valerie Williams to serve as trustees on the Southern Westchester Board of Cooperative Educational Services for the time period of July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2023. Is there a motion? Oh, motion. I'm raising my hand for the motion. Okay. Cynthia, second, Pete, discussion. All in favor?
Michelle, I'm not sure if we voted on the one before. I think I interrupted you, but you may have jumped over it. Did we actually vote on the, on the budget? We did?
Yes.
I believe so.
I believe so. Sorry about that. Okay.
Okay, we are going to now move on to personnel. Number one, appoint a superintendent. Whereas the Board of Education of the Chaco Union Free School District seeks to appoint Ms. Amy Goodman as superintendent of schools for the school district and to approve an employment agreement setting forth the terms and conditions under which Ms. Goodman will be employed. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education of the Chaco Union Free School District hereby conditionally appoints Ms. Amy Goodman to the position of superintendent of schools for a four-year term to commence July 1st, 2020 and ending June 30th, 2024. Subject to and contingent upon the satisfactory completion of the fingerprinting process required by the New York State Education Law and be it further resolved that the Board of Education here approves an employment agreement with Ms. Goodman dated April 21st, 2020, setting forth the terms and conditions of employment under which Ms. Goodman will serve as superintendent of schools during the aforementioned term and hereby authorizes the president of the board to execute the same, subject to the conditions set forth. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second, Terrez. Discussion. Okay, so let's start with maybe Laura and Pete. You want to give us how we got up to this point and a little bit of the history? And then we will talk about the contract, the terms of the contract and Ms. Goodman's appointment.
Okay. Sure. So I'll start. I'll make some, I know it's getting late, but I'll I'll make some comments and sort of recap. Superintendent starts at Pete and I, I both chaired. So Pete, if I miss anything, please fill in. I know I know while some have been paying attention all along, some might just be tuning in now. So to close this process and clear up any confusion, either from comments made on social media or just to have a better understanding, I'm going to go through just real briefly what we did for the district. So let me start first by thanking Dr. Coles, superintendent of Southern Westchester B O Cs, and James Grado, assistant superintendent of B O Cs, and their team for providing a tremendous service in our superintendent search. For those confused and asking questions, you know, a board of education will search for superintendents and it's done either through private companies and that can cost $30,000 or more, or they can use B O Cs, which is free to our district. So, you know, while some criticized the decision at the time, we had, we researched, Pete and I, we did our homework. And as a board, we decided that we were going to go with B O Cs and not spend the money on the private. So that has that has worked out well. I want to just go a little bit into Dr. Coles and his staff. They couldn't have been more professional and thorough throughout this process. They went above and beyond to make sure our search was inclusive and transparent. Superintendent Dr. Coles held forums with parents and the community sessions with school staff and students and for the purpose, really, for determining what these constituency groups were looking for. The feedback along with the board's input formed our decision-making process. So for example, initially, we were going to do a closed search, but then the community said they wanted it open for more transparency. So we would very much went by the direction of what our community was asking for. So in posting this position together with the board, a very professional advertising brochure was designed and it was posted across all professional education websites over winter break until the end of January. Once all the applications were received, every candidate was vetted, researched, and interviewed with B O Cs and then narrowed for the board to select the best matched candidates. So when we posted the position over winter break, Ms. Goodman, who had stepped in to be our interim superintendent, submitted her application to B O Cs. It was at this point she became part of the general pool of applicants and went through the process of multiple interviews over the course of weeks to become part of our first group and then one of our three finalists. In the end, while we were fortunate to find three excellent candidates, Ms. Goodman, to her credit, at each step of the vetting process, rose to the top. Through extensive interviews over weeks, many questions, scenarios, writing samples and references, the feedback on Ms. Goodman met or exceeded expectations and proved to us that Ms. Goodman was highly qualified and possessed all the criteria that the Chaco community was looking for in a superintendent. So when we get a question like, well, what happened to the search? Let me reiterate, this process started last July. It took many months and many hours and I want to recognize those hours spent meeting, listening and researching and the many evenings and weekends that the Board of Education and B O Cs spent working to make this appointment happen. The board takes this responsibility very seriously, serious, and the most important impactful decision we will make. I, along with this board, made our first priority. And in the end, we were fortunate to have Ms. Goodman go through this rigorous process and prove to us that she met the community's criteria and is the most experienced candidate. Ms. Goodman and her relentless positivity and energy never stops working and thinking of what is best for our students and staff. I'm excited to have an outstanding experienced professional lead our district and I want to congratulate and welcome Ms. Goodman. I again thank Ms. Goodman and my fellow board members for their dedication and commitment and I look forward to working together as a cohesive team. Thank you. Pete, anything I missed?
That was very well done, very well said. Thank you, Laura. Very complete. Yeah, I'll just off the cuff, just reiterate the 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 point that this was a very robust, objective search. And I say that, and it may sound like I'm being a little defensive here, because I am, because we put a lot of work into this. And I know there are some that believe that because of the outcome of the search, that it wasn't a real search, that somehow this was sort of the plan all along, and it's just not true. There's a lot of work went into this. I know for myself personally, I look as this is the most important thing I was ever going to do as a board member. I know my fellow board members feel the same way. And and we we took it very, very seriously. Again, I'm not saying this just to get credit or to complain about the work, but I say it more as validation of the effort and the objectivity that was put into it. I calculated that we put in over 40 hours of meetings. That's just meetings and interviews. That doesn't include the personal time that we took looking over resumes, looking over proposals, looking over the community survey results, looking over the committee results. Again, I don't say that because I want credit. I say that because if this was not a real search, it wouldn't have done all that. This was absolutely a real search. And and when back when Ms. Goodman was put in as the interim, the search was already underway, or at least we started the process and I personally didn't even know she was going to be a candidate. It wasn't until later on that we found out she was applying. So we took this very seriously. It just so happens that she's highly qualified, very good at her job, and she rose to the top. I'm quite certain that if she was in our interim and she put in as an outsider, she would have been right there at the top. I have no have no doubt about that. And the committee results that we got, and I want to thank also our committee members who did put a lot of work into this, although we didn't ask our committees to rank the applicants or to select the applicants. They just gave us feedback. I can tell you that the feedback was in line with what we selected, very much so, in my opinion. So I really am confident we made the right choice. You know, the fact that she was already here as an interim, some may say that was an unfair advantage. I don't see it that way. I see it as as it could have easily been a disadvantage. I mean, had she been a charlatan and had she been somebody that just looked good on paper and wasn't very good at her job, that would have came came fourth in the time that she was an interim and quite the opposite happened. So yeah, to Laura's point, she she meets the criteria, what we're looking for, all the characteristics, and she clearly was the most experienced. Me personally, there's a couple of combinations that I really see fitting in her. One is a breadth of experience, but coupled with a desire to look to the future and look for innovative ways to do education. Some people who have been around for a very long time, you may say are stuck in their ways. I don't see that, see Ms. Goodman being that way. She has a lot of experience, but she's also always looking to the future. And then she also has a good combination of toughness and fairness and compassion as well. So I think she's a perfect fit and I'm really, really excited about this appointment. And again, just want to reiterate the the job that this board did and and the fact that this was a very, very legitimate, objective, broad search that just happened to end up this way. So that's it. The last, you thanked B O Cs and Dr. Coles and Jim, and that's really great. And I thank the committees. I also wanted to thank Lauren Trul as well for all the work she put in. She she definitely was a right-hand man of Laura and I, of most of Laura. And she was just a just a behind the scenes, critical, critical component of all of this, puts a lot of work. She wears so many hats. She's just amazing. So but she was great for this process as well. So I just wanted to thank her as well. But yeah, that's that's all I have. I'm excited about it.
Great. Terrez and Cynthia, did you want to say anything, Lauren?
Well, I mean, they obviously said a lot. I'm very excited about what's to come. I mean, it is so evident that Ms. Goodman is so committed to our students, to our district, and is an extremely hard worker. Like Laura and Pete said, we didn't know that she was going to be putting in for this. And when she did in going through this process, I mean, it was so clear through our interview process and all the feedback from the committees that it is the right decision for this community, for our school district, for our students. So I am so looking forward to what's to be. And I'm also excited that she's committing to a four-year contract. So that, for me, says a lot, that she wants to see change in our district. And Pete also mentioned, yes, when someone with such a huge background of experience, you think, oh, well, what are they going to do differently? I mean, that's all she does. She's constantly looking and seeing how can we make things better? So that excites me greatly. And I think we're all going to benefit from it and mostly our students. So I look forward and welcome.
Thanks, Cynthia. Terrez?
Yes, I want to also thank Laura and Pete because you guys put a ton of work into this. And Pete, you and I'll have to discuss how you keep time. Because I don't think it's accurate. That'll be for another time. I would argue the 40 hours. I think it's like some type of derivative for you. We're going to work on that. I have last.
Listen to my words. I said over 40 hours.
I'll replay it, Pete. We'll talk about it another time. Okay. And I happen to know when this all started, it was July 18th, which was my son's birthday. That's the only reason I know. And when we had our board retreat and we selected committees. So that's actually our commencement date for our superintendent search. And that was before Ms. Goodman was even on the radar of Chaco, period. So thank you very much, in all seriousness, Pete and Laura, because you guys also put in a lot more work than the 400 hours we did. And it took a lot of effort to be as organized as you were and give us all direction. So I really do appreciate it. Just to Ms. Goodman, you know, I I think this is something that we can kind of look to as something positive in a time where things are negative. And your positivity is certainly contagious. You are an exceptional leader and I think even more importantly than being an exceptional leader, you're an exceptional person. And you've made really tough decisions with laser focus, keeping our students at the forefront of your priority. And I can't thank you enough for that. Your hard work and dedication to these kids and to our district is commendable. I feel like whenever we meet, I kind of can even learn from you leadership skills and ways of, you know, dealing with people because we're all constantly dealing with people in our lives in a more positive and effective way. And I am personally so grateful that we have you for four years. I wish it could be like 14, but you're only allowed to have a three to five-year contract in case anyone wants to know. So congratulations and welcome. We are so happy to have you.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Thanks, Terrez. I also, not to be repetitious, but Laura and Pete from day one, when they took on this task of heading up the superintendent search, have done really an outstanding job. And I will also like to thank Dr. Coles because I really, I have gone through this before and in the past, the district did use one of those professional search firms. And just so that the community knows, that would have cost the district this go around probably over $30,000. And if Dr. Coles should ever need a recommendation or a reference, he would get very high regards from all of us, all five of us. We're extremely impressed with the way that he conducted the search, the quality of candidates that he brought forward to us, the background work he had done on the candidates. I mean, it was so highly, highly professional and very well organized and really couldn't say anything better about Dr. Coles. And also, I think his his understanding of our community and the way that he worked with the the segments of our community in our in our committees. And I just really think he did an outstanding job. I also want to thank everyone who served on our communities. There was the teachers, administrators, community members, C S E A members. We had students involved and it was really a lot of time on their part. Also for the community to know that the groups actually met after school, after our school was closed because we were in the containment zone and met down at the community center and came on their own time and wanted to see this through, you know, had made a commitment to serve on the committee and felt the importance of seeing it through to the end. And we want to thank everyone involved in that because the feedback and the comments that we received from all of those groups is so valuable and led us to this decision. And we really would not have been comfortable doing it without that. I mean, that information was just so important to us. I too am very, very happy to present to the community a four-year contract. I want to thank Ms. Goodman for working with the board on negotiating the contract. Again, this contract has been negotiated over the past few weeks when we are in the same crisis that we had just spoken about when we talked about the budget. It is the same period of time and we're trying to put together a contract for four years that is both fair and really signifies Ms. Goodman's experience that we are so fortunate to have. So a little bit more specific on what is in the contract. The contract was posted on board docs, but it it does not say in the resolution. The salary is $268,000. Lauren, I know you're watching also. And if in the future, we can put, I believe in the past, we have put the salaries of administrative appointments in the resolutions, let's just make that something we do going forward because I don't know why it's not here, but let's just make sure we do that going forward. So the salary is $268,000. The total compensation for Ms. Goodman's contract, and now that would cover any benefits of pension or healthcare or anything like that, is $283,534. There is no contribution to the pension fund and Ms. Goodman at this time is not taking healthcare from our district because she is receiving it from a prior position. In reference to Mr. Albano's contract, that total compensation was $287,317. So the total compensation for Ms. Goodman's contract is actually less than our previous superintendent. And I just want to point that out because I believe that it is a responsible decision that was made by the board during this these times. The specifics regarding healthcare are laid out in the contract. So if anyone wants to see that, they can see that in the contract. But as it stands right now, there is no contribution to healthcare or to the pension system. So that being said, I would like to congratulate Ms. Goodman, welcome you once again, and really want you to know that you have, I have said it over and over, you have the support of the board. We thank you for getting us through this challenging time and more so the future to come because we really do believe in your direction and in your leadership and that you will lead us down the path that we have really been hoping to get to for a very long time. So we thank you.
And Michelle, just just to make sure that we answer Ms. Nielis's question, because I think the other part of her question was about the side letter.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Want to address that?
Yeah, the side letter is specific to Ms. Goodman's compensation as to how it how it is paid, specifically how her salary is paid specifically in next year, in not in the four years, but in next year's contract from July 1st, 2020 through, let's see, how do we say, June 30th, 2021. So the side letter is just, it's the compensation is what I just said, the salary is $268,000. The side letter lays out the way the compensation is is going to be paid.
Right. And I'm not sure, I think the question also asked why the side letter isn't posted, but but I'm looking at the public. I'm, I'm, well, I'm looking at the public version of Board Docs, not my DOE login, and it's there. So side letter is attached, I'm not sure what happened there, but.
I was told that it was attached this afternoon.
Yeah, it's, it's there. So, so, yeah, so if it wasn't there when you looked the first time, the public, it's there now. And as far as the secrecy comment, there's no secrecy. I, I think the, you know, actually, it's our desire to be transparent as to why we made the announcement before the contracts were actually sort of dotted and then able to be posted, because we wanted to be transparent. We didn't want to make the announcement the same day that we were doing the, the vote, so we announced it, I believe, on Thursday.
Friday.
The reason why we didn't.
Friday.
Yeah, Friday, that's right. The reason why we didn't post the documentation is that it was, even though all the substantive things that were agreed upon, it was still being sort of finalized by the lawyers, and it wasn't quite, you know.
It wasn't.
Until this afternoon, quite frankly. So there's nothing being hidden, it's just, actually, it was a desire to be transparent that we announced it before we actually put the paperwork forward. But it's, it's all there now. Yeah, so there's, there's nothing to hide.
And they're absolutely, and we're very actually proud of the contract and the negotiations, and we are grateful that it was a, it was a, it was a smooth process and, you know, there, it's there for everyone to see, it's posted.
Right, and Michelle, weren't we told that we, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Weren't we, I believe, I just want to make sure that, to speak to what Pete was just saying, we were told by council we didn't have to make the announcement ahead of time.
No, absolutely.
Right?
Right.
Right, so we didn't have to make the announcement ahead of time, so that was actually our act of good faith in an effort to be transparent and not secretive or hide anything from the community.
Correct. Yep, and, and the side letter just.
I didn't know if.
Go ahead.
Sorry, no, I was just going to say, after you say that, Pete, I didn't know if Ms. Goodman wants to make sure that we answered all the points to Ms. Neils' question. So when Pete's finished, if you could just read it and make sure that everything was answered.
Okay.
Ed, Pete, because you were saying something, I don't know if you wanted to.
No, I was just going to, just, just build upon what Michelle said about the side letter and just clarify a little more, you know, what that's all about, and you can read it yourself. Basically, it has to do with the fact that Ms. Goodman has already retired once, so there, there's some possible limitations on how she can receive salary until she hits a certain age. So this is, just sort of addresses that internally. It doesn't, doesn't change the compensation, the compensation is the compensation, it's just the way that it may have to be structured in order to, in order to comply. So, but it's all, you can read it, and then if anybody has any questions, they can email and then ask once they read it. Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay, so I'm just going over the question that she asked, and it is a four-year contract. I will not be receiving lifelong benefits for free from the district, and I have benefits from another district. It asks if I was receiving a pension, and I am, because I am retired and as, I think Ms. Neils is also a teacher, and she understands that after we put in a certain number of years, one of the benefits of our position is we do get a benefit in that way. And for me, that was some reasons why I stayed in public education, which I love so much anyway. And, you know, again, as the board said, there was no secrecy in this. It's apparent, it's online. If you want to call me and talk about it, I am certainly, email me and we can discuss it further. But the board is very transparent, I am very transparent. I will be sending a letter tonight to thank everybody, but I will say tonight that I am completely impressed with the board and the transparency and how hard this process was. I wasn't given any special treatment whatsoever. I have to say that every single group was very challenging but smart. It was an impressive interview process. I was so impressed with the students. Oh my God, they were really diving into my whole application and asking me questions, which tells us something about the education that we do do in, in Tocco, in the middle school and in the high school, because these were older kids and they were pretty amazing. And I appreciate the transparency, and I appreciate that it was a hard process, because I want to get a position that I, that I make my way through. And I do bring a wealth of experience here, but I also feel incredibly fortunate, because as I said in the different announcement, this really is a little jewel of the district. It's so incredibly special, with very special people that work here and that live here, and the most wonderful children. And I am committed to bringing this district to another level with this wonderful faculty and staff and community, so that Tocco is completely not just our hidden jewel, but really a jewel that everybody knows about. So I just, I just want to, to work with the faculty and the staff and the parents, because the kids deserve it. And we will, and it's a wonderful district, not putting down anything that happened before, we're just going to get better together. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we now have to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Congratulations.
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 Thank you. It's my pleasure.
Okay, number two, approve a side letter. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Tocco Union Free School District approved the side letter of agreement with Ms. Goodman dated April twenty-first, two thousand twenty, and hereby authorizes the board president to execute the same. Their motion. Pete, second. Laura, discussion. We just discussed it. All in favor? Okay, number three, award tenure. Be it resolved that upon the recommendations of the interim superintendent, Lee Liu is hereby granted tenure in the tenure area of Assistant Superintendent of Business effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Terrez, discussion. Amy, did you want to comment on Lee's awarding of tenure?
Okay, so first of all, as I said before, I am very fortunate that Lee is staying for one more year with us and that she essentially, just even through this budget process with her, she is very knowledgeable, she understands federal and state law, and she is really keenly aware of the budget and of being fiscally responsible and honest and transparent. Like, I have complete trust in Lee that she does the right thing for our students. And the nice thing about Lee is she's also interested in education, so I can have those conversations with her, such as, we ought to have some compensation for those kids for next year, we just, you know, this is a pandemic, and she'll understand that. And she'll say, okay, we will, we will find that, because she does really care about kids. And that makes a big difference when you have a businessperson that in the end can understand education too. So I highly recommend her for tenure. I know it's a year, because she's leaving us and retiring after that, but I do, she has my complete support in this tenure recommendation. She deserves it. Thank you, Lee.
If I could also add, it's very helpful, because Lee has also been a school board trustee in her home district. And I always find that having served on the board, she understands the information that the board is always asking of her and understands what we need to make knowledgeable decisions. So I appreciate that perspective as well as her conservative budgeting. Okay, is, oh, we've motioned already. All in favor? Congratulations, Lee.
Congratulations, Lee.
Congratulations.
Number four, change of resignation. Whereas Lee Liu previously submitted a letter of resignation for the purposes of retirement, such resignation to be effective on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And whereas Ms. Liu has agreed to remain in, in the employ of the Tocco Union Free School District for an additional year, so that the Board of Education can hire a qualified replacement. And whereas Ms. Liu has notified the Board of Education that her intention is to provide this service to the district for one calendar year through a letter of resignation for the purposes of retirement to be effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education rescind its action taken on December second, two thousand nineteen, accepting Ms. Liu's resignation for the purposes of retirement. Be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts Ms. Liu's letter of resignation for the purposes of retirement to be effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion. And thank you, Lee, we're very appreciative to have you stay this year with us, and I know it will be very challenging for you. All in favor? Okay, number five, approve an agreement. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the agreement dated April twenty-first, first, two thousand twenty relating to Lee Liu's terms and conditions of employment, and be further resolved that the board president is authorized to execute the agreement consistent with this resolution. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Laura, discussion. And then, just in full disclosure there, I don't have the contract in front of me right here, but Ms. Goodman did state in the budget presentation that the salary is ten thousand dollars less than last year, and all the other conditions of the agreement remain the same. Is that correct? All the other, everything else is the same, correct?
Correct.
Right. All in favor? Okay. Welcome, Lee, one more year.
Thank you.
Number six, accept personnel recommendations. Resolve to accept personnel action items A through C as outlined below. Is there a motion? Laura, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor? Okay, we now move on to the adjournment. Motion to adjourn the meeting. Laura, second. Pete, discussion. All in favor?
Okay, thank you. Good night, stay well, stay safe, and we will be back. Our next meeting, as Lee said, is May eleventh, unless we do have a need to meet again, a special meeting, if something should change with State's decision on our budget. Thank you, good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.